I guess we're ready. And I would like to welcome everybody to the joint meeting between the Stoughton Area School District Board of Education and the Stoughton Committee of the Whole. For the Stoughton City, this is a regular committee of the whole meeting, which means we're going to do roll call for our group, and then we'll go around and we'll do introductions for everybody. And then we're going to have presentations from the school district and also from the city. And then there'll be Q and A at the end. We would ask that you hold your questions to the end, and School Board President Dirks is going to facilitate the questions and answers. So if there's no questions, we'll get started. So the first order of business would be the roll call. And we'll just go around and do a roll call, just start. So Swadley, I'm here.
Well, Connor, and I'm here too.
All right.
Reeves here.
Bartlett here.
Mieske here.
Jensen here.
Hirsch here.
Borstman here.
Johnson here.
Engelberger here.
Dan Olson here.
Okay, so thank you very much. Looks like we have a quorum, that's always good. So we'll just go around and, like I said, my name is Tim Swadley, I'm the council president, and I represent District One.
I'm Pat O'Connor, I'm Overton with District Four.
I'm Scott Dirks, I'm the president of the Stoughton Area School District Board of Education.
Lisa Reeves, District Two Alderperson.
Matt Bartlett, District Four Alderperson.
Tom Mieske, District Three Alderperson.
Greg Johnson, District Three Alder.
Regina Hirsch, District Three Alder.
Seth Borstman, District One Alder.
Yolanda Baffett-Gibson, School Board Member.
Joe Frye, School Board Member.
Brett Schumacher, outgoing treasurer of the board.
Kathleen Task Johnson, District Two.
Sarah Vav, Board of Education.
I'm Mike Engelberger, District Two, City Council.
Allison Sarg, Deputy Clerk, School Board.
Timon Sager, Superintendent of Schools.
Greg Leck, Police Chief.
Donna Olson, American City Stoughton.
Tammy LaBord, Director of Finance and Economic Development for the city.
Rodney Shields, City Stoughton Planning Director.
Okay, anybody else that wants to stand up and... Who's going to be presenting from the district?
Kelly.
Okay, if you want to just introduce yourself, and then you can go right into your presentation.
Hi, my name is Erica Pickett, I'm the Director of Business Services here for the Stoughton Area School District. So, just get started. All right. Well, thanks for the opportunity to talk a little bit tonight about school finance and enrollments, specific to Stoughton, and then just schools in general, and then how those variables do impact how we function on a daily basis. So again, I'll talk about the finance, the enrollment piece, and then I'll hand the baton over to Kelly, who's going to talk a little bit about poverty and how that impacts student So again, school finance can be kind of complicated, and I'll just try to speak to it in terms of an overview at that 100,000-foot level. But when we talk about our finances, you'll hear us talk a lot about our revenue limit. And the revenue limit formula really does drive about, really, our entire financial planning process. Almost 90% of our total operating revenues are a combination of our tax levy and our general state aid, and those are the two revenue sources that are dictated by our revenue limit formula. Revenue limits were put in place back in 1993, and that was put in place really as a means to control property taxes. Through the 1980s and early 90s, property taxes in Wisconsin were increasing at pretty high percentages, so due to the concern for that, legislators looked for ways that they could control those property taxes. So that's when the revenue limit was created. That piece of legislation was coupled with what was referred to at the time as two-thirds funding. So the state of Wisconsin made a pretty significant investment in what they paid for in terms of school costs, and by infusing that additional aid, they were able to reduce property taxes. They also put another piece of legislation in place at the same time that was referred to as the Qualified Economic Offer, or the QEO, and that was really a tool that school district used as a means to control cost increases associated with salaries and benefits. And school districts, you'll learn that the majority of their budgets are comprised of salary and benefit costs. So, again, those three things put together were put in place as a means to control property So how does that revenue limit work? Really, I'll try to boil it down as simple as I can. Every year when our kids come back to school in September, we do what we refer to as our Third Friday Count. So every district across the state of Wisconsin goes through a process to essentially determine their enrollment. The revenue limit takes a three-year average of our September enrollments, and averages use as a means to smooth the effect of bumps up or down in terms of our enrollment. Once we have that enrollment calculated and we can determine what our three-year average is, we multiply it by a specific amount per student, and then that essentially determines what our allowable revenue limit is. The amount received per student can vary from one district to the next. When revenue limits were put into place back in 93, they looked at each individual school district and how much they were spending per student at that time. That became every district's base, and then every year after that, that amount per student was increased for inflation. And when we look at Stoughton, that average increase was right around 2.5%, and that was the case all the way up through the 2008-09 school year. As I said earlier, revenue limits were really put in place to reduce property taxes or to limit those increases moving forward. So what is that relationship between our revenue limit and our tax levy? Once a district has determined that allowable revenue limit, the state contacts us and lets us know how much we're going to be receiving in our state aid allocation. The allowable revenue limit, subtract that state aid, that really gets us down to what our allowable tax levy is. As I mentioned on the previous slide, that amount per student was typically increased for inflation up through '08-'09. This was about the time that the state really started to struggle to balance their budget. And since public education is a huge share of the state's budget, they were really trying to figure out ways that they could balance, and unfortunately, it fell back on public education, or part of it fell back on public education. So in order to... Because they couldn't keep up with the increase needed in state aid, what they ended up doing was reducing or minimizing the amount that we could increase our revenue limit per student. By doing that, it was able to still prevent property taxes from going up. If they were to allow that increase per student to continue at the pace that it had been, and they didn't also correspondingly increase their state aid, what essentially would have happened was property tax increases across the state. So in '08-'09, actually starting in 2009, '10, and '11, we were actually capped at how much we could increase our amount per student to $200. So what does that look like in terms of actual numbers? I just came up with a very generic example to demonstrate the concept. So here we have an example where we've calculated our allowable revenue limit at $10 million. Then we assume that the state contacts us and lets us know that we're going to receive $8 million in state aid. We do the math, and that allows us to tax up to $2 million. Now let's just take that another year forward and assume that we are able to increase how much we can spend per student, and that calculates our allowable revenue limit at $11 million. If the state aid amount stays the same at $8 million, that essentially allows us to tax up to $3 million. So again, a $1 million property tax increase. Again, when the state started to struggle to keep up with state aid, they made those adjustments to our per pupil amount, and for the first time ever in 2011-12, we actually received a decrease in how much we could receive per student, and in Stoughton, that was $401 per kid. That was at the same time Governor Walker was elected and Act 10 was put in place. Following that school year, we did receive a $50 increase per student in 2012-13, and then the next biennium allowed us to increase $75 per student. In 2012-13, the state also introduced a new aid called a per pupil aid, which was put in place to also help support some school funding. In this most recent biennium, we were not allowed to increase any amount per student in our revenue limit calculation. So again, once we've determined how much revenue we are able to receive through that formula, we work to fit our expenses within that framework. I mentioned this earlier, but the majority of our budget is our salary and benefits. We are a people organization, and the ability to attract and retain quality staff is really critical to the ongoing success of our operation. Trying to provide competitive wages and benefits can be a challenge when your incoming revenue doesn't keep up with inflation. In the past two years, districts everywhere in Wisconsin, and really also across the country, are starting to experience shortages of teachers from multiple different position areas. What that has really done is increased competition between districts to attract and retain quality and qualified candidates for those specific positions. The remaining portion of our budget includes supplies, materials, the kinds of things that we use every day, as well as our purchase services, which can be very broad as well, including things like software licenses, utility costs, and tuition payments that we need to make for students open and enrolled out of the district or attending private voucher schools. Like all public entities, and I know all of you are aware of this as well, we're always finding ways to reduce costs and improve efficiencies whenever we can. Over the past 10 years, we have made many enrollment-driven staffing reductions. We've also closed a school building to not only meet the needs of our kids in terms of enrollment decline, but to make some significant cost reductions. Closing a school saved the district about $1 million when we closed the school, and that's been an ongoing savings ever since. And we do all of this with the goal in the eye of retaining programs and services for We're very lucky in that we have had a lot of community support when it comes to our finances. During 2010-11, the district pursued a nonrecurring operational referendum to help us balance our budget. This allowed us to levy a set amount for four years above and beyond what our revenue limit calculation was. When this referendum expired, a recurring question was asked in order to provide permanent ongoing financial support. The timing of this community tax support has really been critical to our ongoing improvement efforts. A recurring referendum essentially increases that revenue limit per student amount that we discussed earlier, and that's compared to a nonrecurring referendum that provides a lump sum as a one-time amount. The chart you see here demonstrates how much funding would be available through our revenue limit and our per pupil aid. The blue section indicates the total revenue limit funding based on the state allowable increases. The red portion represents that relatively new per pupil aid that I talked about, and the green portion of the bars represents the funding that we've received through our referendum questions. Again, when you combine the red and blue portions of those bars, and you look at 2016-17, without the referendum support, we would be at about the same amount we were at in We're very appreciative of the community's commitment to providing the resources we need to maintain our comprehensive programs and services for children. As we project future budgets, we continue to recognize declining enrollment as a concern. Ongoing uncertainty at the state level also creates budgeting challenges for school districts. The state is currently in the process of determining their biennium budget. Governor Walker has proposed an increase for school funding over the next two years, and given where we're at with our referendum funding, we know that we can balance our budget through the 18-19 school year. And then depending on what's determined during the state budgeting process, we're optimistic that we can also balance through the 19-20 fiscal year. But again, that kind of depends on what happens through the budget process at the state level. This chart just shows the last few years and where our revenue sources kind of fall, and we recognize that reductions in state aid, coupled with the additional tax support of our referendum questions, has placed a heavier burden on our taxpayers to fund our So again, when we talked about the revenue limit, we talked about the two main components, one of them being a three-year enrollment average and the other one, an amount that we receive per student. Approximately 2/3 of the district throughout the state of Wisconsin are struggling with declining enrollment. Stoughton unfortunately is one of those districts. It's important to note that this year's average is, when I looked at where we were at this year, the last time we were at the same number of kids was back in the '96-'97 school year. And since that point in time, we've actually added four-year-old kindergarten. So again, when we're comparing this year's numbers to the numbers of 20 years ago, we've added an entire grade level to our student population. If we take out the student full-time equivalents generated by 4K, our numbers this year are more similar to what we experienced in 1994-95. Our enrollment peaked in the 2002-2003 school year, and we've been declining ever since that point in time. And while the majority of the state is struggling with declining enrollment in their schools, there are certain geographic areas where this has not been the case, and Dane County is one of those areas. So then how do we compare? We pulled quite a bit of data in preparation for tonight, and this first one here is looking at that three-year membership number that we talked about, and I pulled that number for all Dane County school districts. You will see that Madison is not included here because they're quite a bit different from us. But what this does is it looks at the three-year membership average, and I pulled three specific points in time. The green bar is the 2016-17 school year, the blue bar is the '96-'97 school year. And again, I chose that 20-year period of time because when we look at our enrollment average this year, it's very, very similar, within a couple of kids as it was 20 years ago. And then the '02-'03 year was simply selected because that was our peak. So when you look at all Dane County school districts here and how we compare, you'll see that the majority of districts really did increase in their enrollment from '96-'97 to 2016-17. Cambridge, Marshall, and Wisconsin Heights join Stoughton in the declining enrollment So then, because the districts are so different in terms of total number of kids, I wanted to look at it in a more apples-to-apples comparison. So we looked at some percentages, and again, you'll see this chart three different times. The first one here represents the percentage change from '96-'97 to the '02-'03 school year. And again, this was the point in time in which our enrollment was still growing. At that point, we grew by 14% in our total student population, and when you compare that to the other districts, we were right about the average at that point in time. You can see that Cambridge is the only one that falls into a declining situation. The red line represents a flat population. Now when we look at '02-'03 to 16-17, you see a very different change compared to the previous chart. Instead of growing, we actually started declining, and we declined at a rate of about 12%. And again, this is also the period of time that we added four-year-old kindergarten. So at this point in time, Stoughton is one of four districts in Dane County that's declining in enrollment. And the last one here is again, just looking at the full 20-year period. Again, we were flat. Cambridge and Wisconsin Heights were two districts that declined over that full 20-year period, but all other school districts did increase in their enrollment. And I did omit Madison from this chart, but I did pull up their data and take a look at it, and Madison did increase by 12.8% over this 20-year period of time. So equalized property value is something that we use here in the district to calculate our mill rate. It's also a measure that some use in schools as a data point for drawing conclusions on long-term enrollment help. Total property value can increase in two different ways. It can either be a growth in value of existing property or by new development and adding property into the total. And again, we are looking at equalized value here in the school district. It is not the same thing as assessed value, it's more akin to what is the fair market value. And again, how do we compare? We pulled those same Dane County districts over those same three comparison years to see how they compare in their property growth, to see if there was any parallels between our enrollment and our property value growth. So this first one again is the change between '96-'97 and '02-'03. If you remember, this point in time, we saw enrollment growth about the average of what other school districts were experiencing. This is a little bit different in that our property value growth is a little bit more toward the bottom of the county, and we are definitely below average when we look at everybody combined. And when we look at that same comparison from '02-'03 to 16-17, you can see that we've slipped a little bit further down in that we are tied for the lowest in terms of total property value growth for that second chunk of time. And then again, when we look at this for the entire 20-year period, our total property value growth was 127%. Marshall was lower than us at 119, but every other district in the county had a higher percentage growth in their total property value. So again, the district does believe that a lack of community growth and development does have a direct correlation to school enrollments. So the last piece of data that we analyzed and looked at in preparation for tonight was some census data, and I recognize this is getting a little bit old, being 2017, but the two censuses that we looked at were 2010 and 2000. And we wanted to again, look at how our school age population compared to our counterparts in other districts in the county. And what we learned is that Stoughton is indeed aging. So I also want to point out that I was only able to pull data for cities, it does not include townships, and I recognize that most school districts include townships. I also want to mention that we do have a number of districts here that combine two cities. So for example, Manona Grove, I pulled Manona's data and Cottage Grove's data and combined those for the Manona Grove School District. Middleton Cross Plains was also combined, and then Wisconsin Heights, I pulled Mazo Mania and Black Earth in order to get some data for them. And here you'll see that Stoughton is only one of two districts that saw a decline from 2000 to 2010 in the population age 0 to 17, so essentially, children under the age of 18. We saw a decrease in Stoughton of 9.7%. The only other district to see a decline was Wisconsin Heights, and were more than double what they have experienced in that 10-year period of time. And again, when we look at the other 12, actually no other 13 districts represented here, they saw an increase in children under the age of 18 during that time period. So my focus has been on our kids and our enrollment and our financial data and some of the changing demographics, and age isn't the only shift that we've seen here in Stoughton. We're also seeing a change in our students struggling with poverty, and Kelly is going to take over and walk you through that.
Hi, thanks for having me. I am Kelly Melker, I'm the Director of Student Services here in Stoughton, and I'm going to talk to you a little bit about poverty and its effects on education. So I want to start talking a little bit about Stoughton itself and poverty in Stoughton. So according to statistics, and the statistics are based on free and reduced lunch counts in the district, so in 2006 and '07, 11.3% or 387 students district-wide qualified or were considered economically disadvantaged. 10 years later, in 2015-16, 28.1% or 888 students were considered economically disadvantaged. And I can say with confidence that this is an under-representation of poverty in the community, because not all families that are eligible for free and reduced lunch will apply or fill out the application for various reasons. I'll also say with confidence that as our economically disadvantaged population increased, so does our numbers of habitually truant students. There's a direct connection to limited resources and attendance. Parents may be working third shift, no transportation, older kids are working or staying at home to watch younger siblings. I just wanted to share the data that's kept, this is the federal eligibility income chart for reduced lunches. So this will give you an idea of the income that's required for reduced lunches for our I also wanted to compare, as Erica did, with other Dane County school districts. As you can see, Stoughton is the purple line, and compared to other districts in Dane County, we have a significantly higher spike in economically disadvantaged families. When we're talking about poverty, we also have to talk about homelessness. So the McKenney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act was reauthorized in 2015 with the Every Child Succeeds Act, Every Student Succeeds Act. And what the law is designed to do is to provide equal access to educational services, reduce barriers to enrollment, attendance, and academic achievement. And that includes things like transporting a student to the district that they were attending before they became homeless, so to keep that continuity for our students. The definition of homelessness is children or unaccompanied youth, those youth who are no longer living with parents, who lack a fixed, regular, or adequate nighttime residence. And that can include sharing households due to economic hardship, it can be living in motels, campgrounds, emergency transitional shelters, or also living in public or private places that are not designed for humans to live, such as cars, parks, and abandoned buildings. I'm going to share with you the homeless data in Stoughton, the totals by the year. This chart was created in January. I have updated the table on the right to include the numbers of our homeless students through the 17th of this month. So as you can see, sometimes the numbers stayed a little bit consistent, and now they are starting to rise again. I've learned that a lot of times in April, March, April, we'll see spikes in homelessness because this is the time that the energy is turned off in homes and heat is turned So what are the effects of poverty on our students and our children? Well, cognitive capacity is not just a matter of genetics. It can be strongly influenced by external factors listed here. Things like environmental toxins, poor nutrition, exposure to stress and violence, prenatal drug use, and chronic stress, which poverty can very well be a part of. In a 1995 study by Hart and Risley, demonstrated some of the following things for our children in poor households. By age four, children from poor households hear less words than their peers, the quality of conversations differ, discussions in low-income homes often focus on daily living concerns. An Anne E. Casey Foundation, in a Kids Count data report, indicated that those struggling to make ends meet, who may be juggling multiple jobs or schedules that constantly change, find it much more difficult to carve out time for playing games as a family, checking in with kids at the dinner table, or reading to their children at bedtime. Limited resources, they may have limited resources to take children to places like museums, libraries, or even have books available and expose them to print, learning and vocabulary. I've also done a lot of reading on research. In the last two decades, there's been lots of research on trauma, which chronic stress is considered trauma. And I'm reading a book titled How Children Succeed, and it's making significant connections of chronic stress, poverty, and the actual effects on the body. The book spoke of stress causing challenges with memory, following directions, focus, and ability to regulate emotions. And these aren't choices that kids or people are making, this is actually changes in actual brain structure. Another thing that happens to our students growing up in poverty is a poor sense of agency. They don't feel like they have control, or their caregivers have any control. They always see things as happening to them. They don't see themselves as capable of making choices to shape their life. They instead react in crisis. The part of the brain in charge of planning and reflecting are often not well-developed. This is when we can talk of the thinking brain versus the doing brain. We talk about the doing brain as that fight-or-flight-freeze response that we have, and once you have that response, that response takes over and you can no longer use your thinking brain. So children in poverty can show shorter attention spans, more distractibility, difficulty monitoring the quality of their work, and generating new solutions to problems. Living with housing and food insecurities can tap the brain's energy, leaving less for focus and learning. When kids struggle academically or cognitively, they often get frustrated that they don't learn the same as their peers, and they may act out or shut down in response and frustration. So again, as I've stated earlier, research over the last two decades is really showing a link between poverty, trauma, and the chemical effects on our bodies. Again, poverty affects all people differently, but for some, the chronic stresses can result in trauma. And untreated, researchers have found that these events compound, affecting many parts of the body. Studies show chronic stress can change the chemical and physical structures of the brain, as I spoke of earlier. Another impact is graduation rates. Low-income students are four and a half more times likely to drop out of high school. The gap in standardized achievement tests like the SAT are increasing a gap between wealthy and... wealthy and poor students. Family income is now more highly correlated with college completion than academic ability. In other words, low-performing, high-income kids are more likely to obtain a college degree than high-performing, low-income kids. As you can see, the four-year graduation rate in Stoughton, there's a gap from the graduation rate of our students who are not economically disadvantaged to our students who are economically disadvantaged. And this includes all completion credentials, such as a regular diploma and an alternative diploma. But the Anne E. Casey Foundation had another report called 2016 Kids' Count Data. None of this is to say that kids of less educated, low-income parents are doomed to failure because they're not. Children are incredibly resilient and have the potential to overcome adversity. The point is that declining economic opportunities and the intense stress that economic hardship places on families have stacked the odds against these children. They have fewer opportunities for moving up than the previous two generations. But school experience can have a huge impact on outcomes for kids, and we can and do make a difference. So I'm going to share with you some of the things our Stoughton Family Resource Support are doing for our families in need. So they provide resource sharing and referrals to assist in meeting transportation, medical, mental health, food, clothing, and shelter needs. They may purchase needed items that are not on hand, sometimes even a car tire, for example. They help build resources and coalition work, such as Start, the Homeless Coalition, the Stoughton Cares Foundation. They make determination of McKenney-Vento eligibility, as well as their transportation needs. They visit homes for multiple reasons. They meet individually with students as needed. They work closely with area service providers to address ongoing needs of families, and they write grants to bring additional resources. So there are other things we can also do in schools. Things like flexible scheduling, simplifying instructions, providing scaffolding or visual supports for our students. Reduced paperwork and minimum penalties for participation lapses can go a long way towards increasing engagement and successful completion of schools. We have to keep this design in mind when working with parents or kids. And these things are good for all learners, but they're really critical for students living in poverty. Research also suggests that schools living in poor neighborhoods should focus on interventions designed to counteract the effects of poverty on educational achievement. Some of these things are really looking at universal core instruction, providing more student choice. It's also refining our PBIS, or Positive Behavior Intervention System, for implementation, providing professional development for our staff, for trauma-informed care. And that includes strategies to support our students' social skills, emotional regulation, our response to them, build relationships with them, and overall creating a supportive learning environment for all students. All those interventions have a positive effect on raising achievement for our students. An important quote that I heard at a conference in Madison this past December was, "It's not about doing more, it's about doing things differently." We need to connect children to how learning can make a difference in their lives at much younger ages. And we have to think about how students living in poverty and the struggles they have even to getting to school every day. You can't expect a child to have aspiration if they don't have experience. So our focus is on how we respond and build relationships with our students to help support their ability to regulate their emotions and solve problems, or use that thinking part of their brain. So in conclusion, having this group together tonight, learning about this topic, is an exciting opportunity for us to begin discussions and plan those educational and community interventions for our Stoughton Area School District students and families. Today, more than ever, education remains the key to escaping poverty. However, poverty remains the biggest obstacle to education. But we really do have to remember and emphasize that children in poverty do not have broken brains, limited intelligence, or they aren't bad kids. These students have tremendous potential to succeed with the right combination of education and interventions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Hi, thank you for inviting me. Share some information on the financial update from the city. Just as a precursor, I've now been with the city for about a month and a half. So unfortunately, I don't have all of the historical perspective that others do, but I think what you will see in this slide presentation will give you some background information as to where we stand today. There we go. Our 2017 budget includes a general fund budget of $12,881,246. Net new construction increased 1.938 percent. Similar to what the school district has for funding levels, we as well rely on the state for state aids, transportation aids, shared revenue, expenditure restraint. And the item that we are allowed to increase our tax levy by is either a zero percent number or whatever we can realize from net new construction. Now, in 2017, the tax levy actually decreased 1.93 percent, and the mill rate decreased as well. It amounted to approximately a $16.67 savings for anyone with a home valued at $100,000. Capital borrowing is one of the biggest focuses currently of the Common Council. And I believe it was a year or two ago, they committed to continuing to improve the street construction projects in the city. As part of our 2017 borrowing, we're looking at about a $7.6 million borrow. These are the items that are included in that borrow. Street construction projects for both 2017 and '18, equipment replacement for both of those years, also removal of ash trees for both of those years, and design and additional land for our public works facility. In 2018, the main focus of our borrowing will be for the construction of a public works facility. And then also, we're looking at funding street construction projects and equipment replacement for the 2019 through 2021 period. This is the factor that is of most concern to the city, our net new construction. It's new construction, which is reduced by any demolition or destruction of buildings. These figures we usually receive around August. And as you'll note, up till 2011, from 2008 to 2011, the increase was 3 percent. In 2012, that's when changes took place at the state level, and we were capped at 0 percent or whatever the net new construction rate was. So you'll see that the very first year, construction only changed 0.35 percent, or a $23,000 increase in the levy. This last year, the 1.94 percent amounted to a $133,603 increase. These are concerns of the city, and we will have to continue to meet those requirements. You'll note that the mill rate has gradually increased from 7.28 to 8.46 during this time period. Our future debt schedule, one of our main costs for 2018, with the borrowings that we've proposed, we're looking at a debt service increase of $282,000. Our tax rate will increase 28 cents per thousand, and we're also looking at doing the proposed borrowings for the DPW building and then going forward 2019 to 2021. Currently, our new debt is being wrapped around our existing debt service so that we can minimize the impact on the tax levy. As part of this presentation, I was also asked to look at what kind of joint services we currently provide between the city and the school district. And so I contacted all of the departments and asked them to please tell me, so that I could let you know as well, because sometimes people forget what we do jointly. Media services, recording all the sporting events, school board meetings, school concerts, and other events. The library services, I don't know if you want me to read all of this. Opera House has a school play. We also have park and recreation, sharing of fields, utilizing school buildings for programs, canoes for the middle school, year-end class parties, police services, the school resource officer position, where the school does pay 75 percent of that, providing officers at sporting events, which the school also pays for, safety and security planning, and also a buddy bench. The senior center, school computers for use, and also programs between the students and the seniors. The utilities, they offer an internet infrastructure capacity and access, also tours and classroom visits, in fact, one is coming up on May 2nd, scholarships for teachers and high school students, SASD Energy Efficiency Team member, they partner with the school district. They also implement energy-efficient systems, and they participate in consortium for research and development of new systems that will assist the schools. A wellness coalition between the school, the hospital, and the city. And then youth center, school provides and maintains computers, and they also conduct off-site classrooms during the day. That's all I have at this point, so thank you.
I'm Rodney Sheehan, the City of Stoughton Planning Director. I'm here and been asked to talk a little bit about the comprehensive plan process. What is the comprehensive plan? Comprehensive plan for the city is really a visionary document that allows the city to, in simple terms, identify areas and types of land use as the city would grow, where particular types of land use might be appropriate for residential, industrial, commercial, institutional, even open space and green space. About every 10 years, we make a major effort to update the comprehensive plan. Prior to 2000, we had a document that was considered our master plan. Some legislation essentially changed the name of it, and in 2005, we went through a fairly, well, it wasn't just in 2005, it took several months, and actually about two years, to complete the first iteration of our comprehensive plan. There's nine major elements of the comprehensive plan that the city works with the community to identify a vision for. In 2005, that vision was put in place. In 2012, we made a fairly substantial amendment to the comprehensive plan by recognizing a couple of additional neighborhood plans that had been incorporated. One, where Kettle Park West is located, was added to the comprehensive plan area, as well as the Linnard Farm. Many of you will recall the Linnard Farm on the northeast corner of the city of Stoughton. I'll try to give you just an orientation. I'm sorry for the map and the detail here. There just is a lot of information in the comprehensive plan. This gives you an overview of the entire city. Just for kind of reference, Highway 51 runs down and along, and then Main Street cuts through the middle. You can see where the small parcels within the center part of the map are really the developed portions of the community, but you can see the periphery area are identified for future land use and future development. Now, that doesn't dictate when development's going to occur. What it does is it accommodates a reasonable approach to organized growth, or growth that would be accomplished in a manner that we think as a city would be appropriate for specific land uses. Future infrastructure improvements are also based off of plans such as this. The document, and I'd encourage you all to look at the materials on our comprehensive plan on the city's website, there's essentially nine major maps that indicate the different levels of future land uses, transportation, planning efforts, natural areas of topography and protection that need to be accommodated. But so there's a lot of information in the document, and what I want to stress to the group tonight about the comprehensive plan, it's a community document, but it's not a document that doesn't ever change. It is a plan that has to evolve with the community needs and interests of the community. So it's a living, breathing document, but it is aimed to provide a vision for the community in a number of different policy goals, land use decisions, zoning, implementation of commercial areas, and any number of aspects of the community it looks at. I'll just identify some of the things it really looks at, other than land use. Transportation, transportation corridors, we have to look to the future on where transportation corridors are necessary to be robust as the community grows, where there might be an arterial-level street, or where particular busing routes and/or public transportation might become available. We also have to look at how our utilities are servicing these areas, public sewer and water, electricity. All of those things are factors when those infrastructure needs are identified. We don't want to be in a position where we're not prepared for appropriate growth to occur. So this provides an opportunity to understand how those areas might develop. The housing stock, a lot of discussion about housing stock in Stoughton. This plan offers the broad spectrum of housing opportunities to be built here. Not all development comes to the community with one specific type of development, but certainly the plan recognizes a need to have a diverse housing stock in the city. And when I talk about housing stock, that may be single-family homes detached, it might be attached, single-family structures, might be multi-family units, might be condominiums, it might be elderly housing. Certainly, the broad spectrum of housing has to be met here in Stoughton, as it should be in all communities. Economic development opportunities within this city. I think economic development in Stoughton is a challenge to some degree because we all have particular visions of what economic development means and how that can positively impact the community. It's trying to funnel that energy to really have some type of focus to it. And we'll talk about a couple of specific developments as I move forward here, but I think that's one area that the community, there's interest in discussion about having economic development coordinators, but I think we, as a community, also have to recognize what tools we'd have available to make a unified economic development message to the development community. Other aspects of the comprehensive plan that are evaluated and discussed, intergovernmental cooperation. We all have neighbors, whether it's the school district up against another school district, or the city up against the town, or up against another city. So we have common interests. They're not always the same, but they're oftentimes common, but they're not all, as I spoke to earlier, school districts compete for good employees, much like communities can compete for economic development opportunities. If you look at Dane County, there's a lot of economic development activities occurring throughout the county, and it's really a big competition. A lot of the developments are occurring where they feel they can get the best opportunity to make a dollar. And that's somewhat of a challenge for communities because we have to put our best foot forward, but we also want to be fiscally prudent about how we approach that. And I think the city has been very fiscally responsible in that measure, but again, we are competing against communities that do offer some fairly significant incentives in some cases to have certain types of development occur. So the comprehensive plan, you know, we could speak to that for hours. In reality, the community has held several listening sessions or open house forums. We've distributed a survey, and we continue to discuss the plan. We're actually in the latter stages of adoption of the plan, and I'm hopeful that the group realizes that at some point you have to adopt a document and continue to move forward, recognizing that policy recommendations or guidelines within this plan are always subject to additional review. Additional information comes Additional information comes in, community priorities change, and that has to be reflected in a document that evolves. I'll give you an example of something that could happen. We might have an area that's identified for a particular type of land use. We might say it's envisioned to be, say, industrial. For whatever reason, we might end up having a very quality business opportunity or office opportunity to be evolving there. And if it's in the community interest, we can actually move forward with a process to consider that as a community to amend the comprehensive plan and go through rezoning processes to allow that to happen. Some would argue that this map actually delineates a fair amount of land beyond the city for the vision. The city actually has authority to plan for a mile and a half out from our borders. A mile and a half out from our borders is fairly significant. In reality, a city our size, any city over 10,000, could actually, if we met a third-class standard, which we do by population, we could actually plan for three miles out from our boundaries. Stoughton hasn't taken that kind of aggressive approach to it, but we think it's important to really protect, and when I say protect, protect the boundaries. It's not to say that other things shouldn't happen in there, but it has to be orderly within an area of close to the boundaries. Cities routinely, and I think the city's tight footprint that you see there recognizes that delivery of services are quite efficient, whether it's transportation or public utilities. We don't have essentially one highway that we've developed all the way along that with very little depth to it. This community has one of the tighter-knit footprints within the county. Many urban planners would find that to be quite an asset. In reality, the City of Stoughton has one of the higher densities of dwelling units per acre in the county outside of the Madison Regional Area, but your Verones and your Fitchburgs and others, their housing units per acre is far less dense than the City of Stoughton. So when we look at growth, even if it's growth on tillable farmland, I think the city takes a fairly good approach about making efficient use of that land, and recognizing it's important to do that with a density that's appropriate for an urban setting. Large lot residential, you'll recognize many of those areas are within the city's school district, out by the golf course and other areas, but not within the city limits, because generally, those areas you don't provide the full range of services. Many of them don't have public water systems, they might not have pedestrians, you know, I'm sorry, sidewalks and/or sanitary sewer. In some, they do, but generally, in a large or lot settings, you have some of your reduced public services that are offered within the city. Again, the comprehensive plan, I'd urge you to take a look at it, call with questions, discuss specific areas, speak to the elected body in the city as well as staff to help make sure if you have particular interest, we can help try to answer your questions about it. But it is moving through the process, and this living, breathing document will change again, and I would anticipate it probably being updated again in several years, if not sooner, depending on other dynamics in the community. I think there was an interest in trying to have us talk a little bit about housing trends in Stoughton. This is an interesting situation for Stoughton. For those of you that, and I don't have a slide up here for this one, but it's important for folks to realize, back in the middle 90s, we were building in the neighborhood of 200 to 250 residential units a year. It was all single-family. In a couple of years, I think 95, 96, we were building about 90 single-family homes a year. Trends have changed, but since 2006, we've only built, only three of those years have we built more than 30 residential units, period, for the entire city, not just single-family, that's total residential units on a given year. To give you some indication, we all know the economic downturn in 2008, we felt it really hard here. In 2009, we built one single-family home in 2009. I think you'll recognize some of the towns surrounding us probably had far greater than that. As trends have started to increase, in 2016, we did build 20 single-family homes, but even with 20 single-family homes, the total dwelling unit count in the City of Stoughton was 34. I'm not here advocating for rampant unbridled growth, but I'm just giving you an indication as to some of the, either market end or other trends, are causing the city's overall dwelling unit count to not increase very dramatically here in the last 10 years. Having said that, we're hopeful that you'll see that there is some light, I think, in the future for us. I'm going to speak about the riverfront development. This particular development is one that's been receiving a fair amount of discussion recently. The riverfront development is along the river ironically, but this map gives you an overview of the area that's encompassed by it. And just to give you an orientation, the street north and south on the left side of the page is Fourth Street, and the bottom at the river is where the dam is located or the powerhouse, and the street that runs along the top of the page is East Cell Street. In essence, the entire, the far majority of the land that you see on the north side of the river here has been under, or is under, ownership of the City of Stoughton. The city recently closed on the Milfab property, had previously acquired the Highway Trailer Building, which is right along East Cell Street, and as you may recall or know, the Stoughton Public Works facility is along Fourth Street. So having said that, there's about 13 acres that are seriously being worked through a redevelopment process. City has a redevelopment authority that has been working through this. As part of that process, they sought proposals from, I think they sent out proposals to 160-some different developers to obtain levels of interest about redevelopment opportunities here. They received three back. One of them was, I think, as they described it as being complete, but there are two others that have aspects of it that may factor into how the site actually redevelops. The redevelopment authority, as I understand it, is going to be working through a short process with the community to kind of discuss the vision, but at this point, there is a redevelopment plan that kind of articulates what the anticipated uses and density levels that were envisioned down here along the river. So with that guidance, the development from Tana, or the developer from Tana-Say, prepared a proposal, and I'm not here advocating for any of the proposals at this point, but I think it's worth just taking a moment here to look at. It's always neat for a person that works with plans and maps to look at plans and maps. I'll start with this one. This again really shows that site with a number of buildings on it, shows a riverfront trail along the river, and it shows a multitude of buildings principally residential in nature. It does show there would be a potential for a 70-bed hotel in this concept, as well as the different types of housing opportunities in this area. Again, just to show you a rendering that they put together to give you a scale of what, one concept at this point shows for the, at least primarily, east-western part of this site would look like. Now, while this particular area is a redevelopment area, that doesn't mean there isn't opportunities or market pressures to have development occur elsewhere. The one that comes to mind is one that's really just starting to be constructed in the last year, Nordic Ridge. For those of you who don't know where Nordic Ridge is, Whole Avenue extended to the south from Highway 51, the southern part of that. This plat actually was platted in 2008. Now, what does that mean? All the lots were actually created, but none of the street improvements were put in. The economy took a turn, and the developer stepped away until the economy started to come back. And as many of you might recognize, the first streets were constructed in that development last year. They opened up 40 lots, and I believe there's about seven or eight homes under construction right now in that development. They're still very positive about the development, and they plan Phase Two to open up about another 30 lots or so in 2017. What does that mean? Well, it just opens up the inventory for, in this case, principally, single-family home lots. For anyone who's looked around the city, the number of vacant single-family home lots for construction has been quite low until this development has now opened up. Overall, this development, and I'll show you a map of it. This development, as you can see, Whole Avenue runs from the top of the page to the bottom, and it actually connects with County Highway A. The northwest, northeast part of this plat is the area that's under construction now, and this Peterson Drive area on the far east side of this location is actually going to be a home, parade home site this year. A number of homes in this area will be open to the parade of homes, I believe it's in June. Phase Two, as they're looking forward to that, is actually going to open up the area where the park has been dedicated as part of this development. So this particular developer is trying to work with the community to try to make the park really an attribute to the development. I think he and others have seen that that can be a real opportunity to market the development as a whole, and they're moving forward with this development, so I think that's really a positive opportunity right now. Kettle Park West, been hearing about Kettle Park West, or at least the development west of Highway 51 and north of 138 for about seven years in different forms. What's in color on the screen really represents what's known as Phase Two of Kettle Park West, at least in concept right now. The bottom right-hand side of the screen shows what was identified as Kettle Park West Commercial Center. That encompassed the area where Walmart was constructed, the supercenter. Quick Trip is currently under construction, a bank is scheduled to go in there, and at this point, there's already a Dunkin' Donuts that's slated to be constructed there, as well as several multi-tenant retail and service buildings. Phase Two-A encompassed an area just on the north side of Jackson Street, and has been approved and will be moving forward. You may have learned that True by Hilton is scheduled to start construction of a building, and there, I believe it's a 94-room facility behind the former Kaiser Lot. In addition to that, in Phase Two-A, there's anticipated a senior housing facility. Somewhat of a spinoff of the Kettle Park West area, the former Kaiser Lot just referenced, just along Jackson Street, while it's not in Kettle Park West, is and has been approved for an Aldi's that should be starting construction very soon as well, that's where the empty building sits. I just highlight those, because those are things of areas of discussion. The Phase Two that's in color here has been approved, essentially. There's been a number of conditions subject, the approval was subject to a number of conditions. One of them that's creating, amongst several others, but one of them that's creating a fair amount of challenge right now for the development group is the connection of Oakwood Drive, which is the, kind of the principal diagonal road that would intersect with State Highway 138. Jackson Street is the primary entrance into here, but Oakwood Drive is part of the approval for that to be mated to a connection with State Highway 138. And that's presenting challenges for the development team right now. The light-colored lots on the upper left-hand corner of the colored area are envisioned to be single-family. You can see the area that's shown in the park in this particular development, and then there's additional other housing options, some twin homes, some condominiums, some multi-family units are shown as potential other uses along Oakwood Drive. So Kettle Park West continues to at least be in consideration, but they do certainly have some hurdles in order to move into the future phases of that. Spinoff of Kettle Park West, or part of Kettle Park West, was signalization at Jackson Street. So Jackson Street at Highway 51 is slated to have traffic signals. They should actually be going up within the next 30 days. That will provide a controlled access point for people, most notably pedestrians and cyclists who want to cross into that area. The traffic signals at 138 and 51, they're built to be temporary, because they really are intended to be temporary. The DOT has slated for 2020 to install a roundabout at Highway 51 and 138. So those temporary signals would go away at that time to address long-range improvements there. I think those are the focus points that I was hoping to capture, but I'm certainly open to questions, because oftentimes, I want to make sure I'm capturing what people want to hear about.
Sure. Before we start that, Tim reached out, Tim Swadley reached out to me about four months ago, no, maybe three months ago, to try to set this meeting up. We tried to have a relatively narrow focus of common interest between city council and the school board. Growth is what we decided to focus on for this first meeting. We're hoping there will be others. So what we decided is that I would facilitate the question and answer part of this. So what I'll do is I'll open up the floor for questions from Rod or from any of the other presenters, and then those able to answer the question will just have to make their way up to the mic. So, who wants to go first?
I didn't get your name.
Matt Bartlett.
Matt, okay.
I had a question, I guess, for Kelly, I think. Do we know the poverty level kind of by district and school area? I know that last school strategy session, there was a lot of concern about low-income housing being concentrated in certain areas.
By school building?
By school area, for which school or...
Yeah, we have some of that, I don't have it with me, but Kaganza's 38 percent.
Kaganza's the highest at 38. District as a whole is about 20, a little over 28 percent. Kaganza is 38. Fox is the next highest.
I think it's about 32.
Yeah, and then Sand Hill is 28, 26 to 28.
Twenty-six, twenty-eight. The high school is probably the lowest, but that is probably where the numbers are more skewed, because people aren't coming forth and applying for that free reduced lunch.
Okay, thank you. Others? Oh, thank you, Mr. Engelberger.
Yeah, thank you. Just regarding that point, how do we compare statewide and nationwide with our financial problems? With our poverty rates?
The poverty rate has gone up across the nation and across the state. There are many more, I don't have direct percentages on that, but Wisconsin DPI has shown maps of struggling, the areas where higher percentages of poverty has just gone up. And it's both rural and urban.
You know, I can see why we're lower than, you know, in Dane County, Madison is a rich district, pretty much, and some of the other districts around Madison are rich districts. But when you compare, you know, statewide or nationwide, I mean, this is a problem that everybody's facing around the country.
It is, completely.
And it's, you know, it's probably got a lot to do with a lot of different, you know, federal programs and regulations and policies that have been set in place over the last 20, 30 years, same with the state.
I think you saw, we saw a significant downturn with the recession, and that caused the poverty rates to really increase, and I think people are still recovering from that.
I just want to say one other thing. I just want to say one other thing regarding what Matt just brought up with the subsidized housing or low-income housing, affordable housing, however you want to put it. I feel that's a real, a subject that this group can address, you know, the school district and the city, that we should be looking at so we don't concentrate certain areas and, you know, get certain schools that are really off or really worse off and certain other areas of the community that are a whole lot better. I think, in my opinion, things should be spread around as far as a policy of where you place affordable housing, and I think those are things we probably need to talk about a little bit amongst each other to see how we can figure those kinds of problems out and do what's best for the community as far as, so we don't have the problems where it's really good over here and really bad over here. So, I just think that's an area we can really work on together.
Sure. Let's deal with other questions first, Ms. Fitzgibbon.
I just want to continue with what Mike was saying. I actually wrote a little article from the National School of Board, National Association of School Board, and where, sorry, I didn't bring my glasses. But, "School segregation, then and now, find that integrated schools hold greater potential for helping all students succeed both academically and socially." Then it says, "A composition of our school communities matter for improving outcome for students, their communities and the long-term stability and prosperity of our nation. Due to demographic patterns and legal precedents effort to integrate school, they are often limited within district boundaries." So, if we go to, you were saying, I mean, concentrating demographic in just one area directly is going to affect the school and of course will affect the whole city, so just wanted to point out to that.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I had a question for you, if that's okay. I was wondering whether or not, it's your observation, that homelessness is internal to the city or external to the city? What I mean by that is whether kids are becoming homeless within the city or if they're moving into Stoughton from other areas. And then the second question was, what is the impact on the school and the school budget of getting these kids to their school of origin?
So, what happens with McKinney-Bento? Our numbers are kids that became, and I shouldn't make it a, but I think what it is, is kids who became homeless while they were attending our school district. So, what happens then is that if we don't have shelters and they need to, or they need to go live with a relative at a different school district, basically what happens is the district where they're residing and the district where they came from share the transportation cost. So, let's say a family became homeless in Stoughton and they were attending one of our Stoughton public schools and they had to go to an emergency shelter, but there's only emergency shelters in Madison. So, Madison and Stoughton would share that transportation cost and it's used, it can be given in the form of, if the parents have transportation, we might give them a gas card to help get that student back to that school of origin before that student became homeless. But Madison would share half that cost. So, the school district share, that's what McKinney-Bento, that act has done, is that shared cost. Usually it's in the form, well, it ranges from family to cabs is typically how the transportation goes into effect.
So, you don't have a number, but is it like thousands of dollars or whatever for getting kids transported?
Yes, yes.
In the thousands?
In the thousands.
Okay.
It's probably, I don't know, it might even be fifteen to twenty to thirty thousand dollars.
Per year? That's substantial.
Our school social workers have also written grants and receive other funding as well, so it's not just the burden of the school district. So, there are grants in place that help cover some of these gas cards and some of the cost. But that's the form of the law and it's a shared cost again between the two districts, but yes, it's a federal law.
You have a question?
I'm Regina.
Thank you.
Sorry. I have a couple of questions. One, with the declining enrollment, do you have a good kind of number of students that actually live in Stoughton that choose to go to other schools, like charter schools, private schools, or if they're going to homeschools? And what is a percentage of that that is actually taken out of our public school, you know, numbers? And then I have another follow-up, if you have somebody that actually can answer that?
I can.
Yeah, it's like, why don't you go?
I don't, I don't have all the specific numbers right just off the top of my head, but when we look at the number of kids coming into Stoughton and the number of kids leaving, we have a net loss of usually between a hundred and a hundred and twenty kids. So, again, it's the net between the two. I will say that we had an increasing trend for a number of years where that gap, that net loss was growing and it has kind of leveled off. So, we're not seeing that that is growing and it's starting to shrink a little bit. One of the things that Tim has said, as people have asked about this in the past, is that that takes a long time because if you have a student that open rolls out of the district as a kindergarten student, it's likely that they will continue to be out of the district for, you know, the thirteen years of their K-12 career. So, we're very optimistic in that we've seen that kind of level off and we're really hoping that we can continue to shrink that moving forward. As far as students being homeschooled or attending private or other schools outside of our boundaries, we don't always have very good data on that. Students have to notify DPI if they're being homeschooled, but they don't have to give us all that information. So, sometimes we might have a name but not an age or a grade level. We'd have to go to DPI to get more specific information about kids being homeschooled. The only other private school we have right here in town is St. Anne's right now. Martin Luther no longer operates their private school operation and I don't know specifically what their enrollments look like. I do believe that, like those public schools, they've also experienced some declining enrollment over the last number of years as well.
Did you say another question?
Yes, second question is, with some of the schools, I guess I was wondering, the gap, I think you talked about between students that perform at a higher level and students that perform at a lower level and you do targeted interventions at these schools, do we have enough funds to hire enough teachers or coaches or whatever who do those targeted interventions? Are we, are we able to serve all our students that need that help, is, I guess, is my question?
Erica, can you answer that or should we go to Tim?
I can take a stab at it. Tim, feel free to jump in. I'm more the numbers girl than the intervention person, but I would say that we are very lucky in our school district that we have had the support of our community with the referendum questions that we've passed over the last few years and that, you know, we have had some enrollment-driven reductions, but during that same period of time, we have also really evaluated all of our services and we have added some positions really to meet the changing needs of our kids. Some examples that just popped to the forefront of my mind is some school social workers. That's something that has been really common in schools in the past, but something that we didn't have. So, within the last, you know, five to ten years, we've added some positions there to help support our families in need. In terms of interventions and teaching-type staff that work directly with kids, you know, Tim, you can maybe speak a little bit to this, but I do know that we have historically had folks in our elementary buildings primarily, but also in our middle school and high school that are, we call them reading specialists, and they are able to work with kids that are struggling with reading. And I do believe that our staffing levels in some of those positions are actually a little bit higher than some other school districts. And again, I'm getting a little outside of my area of expertise, but I would say that we really have, even though we've tried to adjust our staffing levels based on our enrollments, we've also then taken a look at the needs for kids and if we've had to make some adjustments in the type of positions that we offer, we have done that as well. And again, we're just fortunate that we've been able to continue to do that due to the support of the community.
And I'm just going to jump in really quick too. It's not always just about adding staff, it's about building the capacity of our staff to work with all kids. So, it's professional development to really reach out and help support all the teachers that are involved, not just hiring new people as a support staff because all the kids are in the classroom all the time, so, or most of the time, they're not receiving like a specialist instruction or intervention. So, we really have to build everyone's capacity and maybe change the way we do things sometimes and that requires that professional development piece. So, I just wanted to jump in and say it's not always about more people. Again, it might be a way of doing things differently and helping support our staff to be able to work with all kids.
We're constantly looking at how do we better meet the needs of the students? And as they said, sometimes it's reallocating staff resources and creating a different position. Sometimes it's adding positions. Sometimes it's adding different programs. We are now in, I believe, year three of offering a summer reading program at all three of our elementary schools. It looks slightly different in every elementary school, but each elementary school is reaching out to the students in the summer to help mitigate that summer reading loss. One of the slides that Kelly showed you is the number of words that our students, especially our students that are economically disadvantaged, do not hear compared to some of their counterparts. So, it's, some of it is programs where we're getting resources and books into the hands of our students. Some of it is, as Erica said, we've added two social workers within the last seven years who are making home visits, who are working with the resources we have in the county. Sometimes it's a matter of working with different organizations and different groups. We have a group right now, a coalition with several of the different churches who were looking, and the city, who were looking at a summer meals program. We know that roughly a third of our students that we know of, eight hundred and some, almost nine hundred students, eat one to two meals a day with us during the school year. What happens during the summer when school's not in session? Where are they getting their meals? So, we're working with a group and as a coalition to look at how can we provide lunches or some meals, starting out what we can do maybe three days a week for students. It's working with the wellness coalition, with our coalition, with the city and the hospital and the schools on different resources for our community and for our families. So, sometimes it's not a matter of adding staff, sometimes it's a matter of investing in different programs, investing in resources, et cetera, to meet the needs. And we're constantly looking at that. You know, if you ask me flat out, do, you know, do we have every program and every staff in place to meet the needs? No, we're constantly looking at that and as it's changing, we're looking at how do we meet those needs? And so, that's an ongoing, evolving thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to, sorry, a follow-up question with that, if, and I know a lot of your programs are relatively new, but with the enactment with these different programs, have you seen the gap decrease from the time like there may be in, you know, 4K to, you know, middle school or?
So, like our summer reading program, for example, we've seen great success of mitigating, we always experience and we always see a summer reading loss or a summer loss. With students that participate in this program, a vast majority of them actually increase in their reading level throughout the summer, but majority of them, you know, high seventy percent or so do not lose, they at least maintain. So, we're seeing those type of things. We're seeing, I think, we're seeing more and more families that are working with us asking for resources and we're able to get them resources. So, we're actually, yeah, we're seeing some growth, we're seeing some, removing the achievement gap. If you remember Kelly's slide with graduation rate, you see over the last couple of years, the graduation rate actually for our students who are in poverty has increased. So, we're seeing some of that as well.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I just wanted to piggyback on that because I've been on the board since Tim has been a superintendent and I regularly interface with school board members around Dane County. The Dane County, we call ourselves the Dane County School Board Consortium. And I would say that Stoughton, based on many of the interactions and talks I've had with other schools, we actually are doing, we actually have more in place than what a lot of our, I would say, counterparts have. We now have school counselors at every one of our elementary schools. There was a time, not too long ago, that we had one counselor that was shared amongst elementary schools. I think our administration runs really lean compared to other school districts. We have made the decision to put our resources towards helping children. And that may mean that our administration, we could use some, I'm sure you would agree, you could use some help, but we always try to put it towards kids. And we do have a budget that we follow. Erica's really good at keeping us on a, has a model that we follow. And I will have to say that the financial part of me, I get a little concerned because we do keep adding staff. Our model is based on not adding, we always add more staff than what our model is and we're, so far, we're able to make up for it. But I would, I guess the point I want to make is that we always err on, we want to make sure that we do stuff that is going to have the greatest impact on children. And we also have very low class sizes for other schools in Dane County as our counterparts. We have a policy in place that it used to be you had to wait until the number exceeded a certain amount before it even ticked off the option of hiring somebody. And we have changed our policies so that we are able to keep our class sizes low, especially K through second grade, third grade. And in fact, there have, last year, we had an instance where we actually added a kindergarten section mid-year because we just needed to have, we had to do that. And I haven't, I don't see that happening in other school districts. So, I'm pretty proud of what we are, what we do as well as being, you know, usually at the bottom, not so much anymore, but we've always been kind of at the bottom of the funding line for all the other school districts in Dane County. So, we're really doing the best we can do.
Mr. Swadley? Thank you, Scott. So, I had a couple of questions about open enrollment. Are you seeing any trends or can you evaluate the data as it relates to either one school versus another that have more kids that are opting for open enrollment would be a question?
So, are we seeing of our residents that are leaving, are there certain schools they're going to?
Yeah, so, we have three grade schools. Are you seeing one school that has more kids open enrolling out than the other two or are they all about the same?
You know, I can honestly say, Tim, I don't know that we've ever dug into where the kids that are leaving would have gone to school had they stayed here in Stoughton. I don't have that data.
Is that data that you're able to generate? Is there a way, a means?
I'd have to look at the kids, well, I'd have to, I don't know. Because really what you'd be doing is looking at kids that aren't in your school system and finding out where they live and then trying to figure out where they would have gone to school.
Sure. And the reason I bring that up is, you know, we run into many community members and some of them say, well, you know, kids are opening, rolling out of a particular school and we don't know if that's really the reality of the situation or if that's just an experience that they've heard or have had. Or even that parents are moving their families from one side of the city to the other to get to a preferred school. And I don't know if that's true or not, but those are the types of communications that we get.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, we could tell if a student was in reverberant for the high school because we only have one middle and high school. The elementary would be a little bit trickier. But I will say that, you know, we have done some work in the past and we're actually working again to look at an open enrollment survey. We did one about five years ago and what was challenging is that we, I don't think there's one silver bullet, there's not one reason that we're finding that families choose to leave our district. Actually, when we did the last survey, you know, three out of the top five reasons that people said they were leaving the district are the same three reasons that people said they were leaving the district are the same three reasons that families said they were coming into the district. So we weren't able to really gather a lot of great data from that. We're gonna go, we're gonna do it again, just to see if maybe we can, you know, get a better feel for if things have changed a little bit.
And the other question would be, is there a trend for the open enrollment from city residents versus township residents? Because the township residents get bused and the city residents typically, I would think, go to more of a neighborhood school. So I've heard some, I've received feedback that maybe some of the townships may not happy, be happy with the school district that their students are being bused to. I don't know if they have a choice in that, but that may be another reason why some parents are opting for open enrollment because they're not able to be bused to a preferred school.
Meaning an elementary school?
Yes.
You know, again, we would have, in order to pull that data, we'd have to, when families choose to leave our district, they apply to DPI and then we find out who they are through the process. So in order to pull that kind of data, I'd have to literally go to DPI and find out the address of the kids that are asking to leave. If it's an existing student, you know, we would know that, but sometimes it's new families that might be moving in. So for example, I mean, I've got a sixth grader and an eighth grader. If I were to move to another community, I may choose to keep them here in Stoughton. So when I moved to that other community, I applied to DPI to open enroll my kids back to Stoughton. You know, I'd be a family. My kids would be kids at that district. Wouldn't even know who they were, where we live, or anything. So it's not just current existing Stoughton students that may choose to open enroll. It may be kids that have never stepped foot in our doors.
We also, we also know, our district is over a hundred square miles.
Yeah.
So we also know that we have students that are closer to Cottage Grove to go to school there than to be, to jump on a bus to go to Stoughton. Likewise, they are closer to McFarland or closer to Oregon, just by their geographic location. And so we have some students that will, and families will open enroll to those districts because I have an elementary student and I'm on a bus for a half hour or I can drive them five minutes down the road to Cottage Grove and the elementary school there. So we have some, you know, so we do know of, we have some families who have always opened enrolled out and when we've asked them five years ago, and as Erica said, we'll do another survey again this fall, where our group will literally call, we have a, part of the survey will literally call every family who's opening and rolling their student out and ask them what the reasons were to give us some data. And again, we have data of its sheer geographic location to the school. Okay. And just a couple of quick points. One of the things you heard tonight is there is a proposal for Kettle Park West to have, basically it'd be a hundred unit senior living. And as a city, you know, we need growth for our net new construction dollars. That's the only way, other than referendum, that the city can generate more tax revenue. So the question is, is that does a hundred unit housing unit like that help hurt you or make no difference as far as the school district's perspective?
So I'll just speak to what I know or what I've read or what I've heard. We work with the UW Wisconsin, the University of Wisconsin Applied Population Lab, and we have worked with them every other year to do enrollment projections. And when they do their research, they, they look at what our trends have been and they do multiple models. So they'll look at, you know, what our enrollment has done the last couple of years and then project what that'll look like down the road. Then they'll look at the last five years, the last ten years. And they also incorporate into that housing trends, those kinds of data points as well. In, in talking with them, what they have indicated to us is that construction of single-family homes tends to result in school age population in all their research. And they work with, they work with many, many districts throughout the state of Wisconsin. They do a lot of research for other entities beyond school districts as well. And I know after the strategic planning event, I'd had some conversations where the question had been raised. You know, if we build additional senior housing, does that then generate single-family homes for families to purchase when those senior citizens move to that, those new housing complex? I don't know the answer to that. So I actually emailed my contact over at the Population Lab just to pick her brain a little bit. And just today, she, well, she sent me something back on Monday or Tuesday and said, you know, she had some gut feelings, but she wanted to reach out to some of her colleagues that work in planning. And just today, she sent me some information and some resources. And I haven't had a chance to look at all of them yet. But, but her thinking was that, you know, that may generate some single-family homes to be available, but you also don't know that everyone occupying that senior housing is necessarily moving out of a home in Stoughton. They could be coming from other places too. So I'm actually really, this is a nerd to me, I'm kind of actually looking forward to reading some of the data that she sent.
Just to follow up on that, and I just got one more thing.
Yep.
Does that affect the equalization aid part of your formula when we have a unit like that going on?
Well, I would say our equalization aid is impacted by the total property value in the district. And just to explain to those that haven't been on the school board before, the aid that we receive from the state is distributed differently to all districts throughout Wisconsin. And they base how much any one district gets on the wealth of the district. Now, while Kelly just explained to you, our student population is experiencing increasing rates of poverty, when we look at our wealth in the state aid formula, it's based on our property value. And because we have lake property, we're actually above the state average in terms of property value per student. So there are two ways that that formula can be affected. Either by property values going up or by student population going down. So when you look at the math, how much is your property value divided by your total number of kids? And then the more wealthy you are, the less you get in state aid. You know, there are, you know, arguments that, you know, by increasing property value, it could result in less state aid, but by increasing in property value, it also could impact your student enrollment numbers. So if you grow and develop and have new properties, new single-family homes, places for kids to move into the district, you're going to, you know, you may be increasing your property value, but you're also going to be increasing your student population to help offset that. So, but, so to answer your question, will, will building senior housing impact that? Yes, in that we are adding to our property value and the construction of that alone may or may not result in additional kids.
Okay.
Bottom line, we get no, we get the revenue based on the number of students in our district. So senior citizens are not enrolling in the school district. So we don't get, we won't recognize money for that.
Right.
Right. Okay. And then just two quick things. The Nordic Ridge, those are single-family homes. You know, I'm very optimistic that that's gonna help the school district. That's one of the reasons why I wanted to have this meeting, so we could talk about these issues of how the city can help the school district and not hurt the school district and vice versa. The other proposed development on the riverfront is that some, my colleague spoke earlier, there is a proposal to have subsidized housing down there. Now, I don't know out of the current housing that's down there, if there's any students coming out of there. If there is, adding another fifty units, will, or will that have an impact to Kegan's School? And that's kind of the question, and I don't really expect an answer tonight. But the whole idea to get us all together is so as the city and the school district are making decisions, we're making decisions that are mutually beneficial.
Yeah.
And we're trying to make decisions that are more strategic instead of just, you know, throwing something up against the wall and seeing what sticks. So that's the main reason why I contacted Scott and I'm very appreciative of the fact that we were all able to get together and have this conversation.
Yeah.
Ms. Brown?
I have two questions. One was alluding to, well, I'll save that for the second, but as we're talking about single-family homes, what are the barriers to developing single-family neighborhoods? It seems like there's, I'm picking up on some reluctance. What is the bottom of that?
The market has to be strong enough. And in some cases, the market hasn't been strong enough for that. And the development has to be profitable. Otherwise, the development's not gonna occur. And if they can't find a way to make the development function and be installed, you know, to high quality, but yet still be able to be profitable, they're not gonna move forward with it. Some of it has to do with the cost of land. Back in the early nineties, the city of Stoughton area, the land prices lagged the greater county by quite a bit. And so we had a surge of home starts because the market was lagging here. It was much more cost-effective to develop here. That's changed. We started, not that we have the most expensive lots, but we've, we started to match some of the competing communities in the area. And certainly, you've got strong market pressures in certain districts and, and communities, whether it's Owana Key or Verona, there's certain other pressures that are causing them to grow more rapidly. There was one interesting thing I think is worth highlighting on the valuation you talked about of the district. You guys look at the district as a whole. And she mentioned the property values around the lake cause an increase in property valuation for their, for their taxes or for their equalized value. That's an important distinction because not all the city properties have, we don't have high-cost housing in the city of Stoughton. It's all principally just outside the city limits. And so when we look at the community and how we plan the community, we're providing a different range of housing options. Your neighboring townships aren't providing maybe the full breadth of housing. We talked about whether it's affordable housing or senior housing or different spectrums of housing. Those choices generally aren't available in your rural communities around us. So the city also has to reflect on what our goals as a, as a community with a good stratification of population and membership and how we meet those goals of a greater community than just the city. And so I think that ties into the housing a little bit, but I think the market really reflects on that. And I think we have to be positioned, and the comprehensive plan tries to do that. But sometimes it comes down to the farmer that doesn't want to sell their land. The most equitable piece of land or the easiest one to market and develop might not really even be on the market. So the next farm might be on the market, but it's really not cost-effective to develop there. And so some of that factors into kind of how the, how development occurs in a small community setting like this.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Second question, you alluded to public transportation.
Yeah.
What is the status of that?
We'd all love to have more. Public transportation, regional transportation, when you talk about busing or opportunities within the county, even Madison Metro is looking at how they could fulfill whatever the demand is in Stoughton and Oregon and McFarland. You might recall there was an effort to have, create a transportation taxiing authority within Dane County a number of years ago that failed. Had that occurred, there really would have been an opportunity to potentially provide transportation options for this, for this community. Having an understanding of what the market is in your community and where the destination and origin of those ridership is a, is a real challenge for Stoughton. Each of you can look at how you travel to Madison or where you go in Madison. It would be very difficult. So we'd have to understand what type of ridership makes it equitable even to provide, you know, like a busing opportunity. So the shared ride taxi in the city, not every community in Dane County has that. That's really quite an important aspect of the transportation program in Stoughton. But the more regional facility is a very deep question. And until there's a, there's a way to fund such a system and understanding the ridership, I think it'll be challenging to have that expand right now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
First of all, I wanted to thank the school board and the teachers for you guys having these issues on your back. I didn't know it was as bad as it was, so I wanted to thank you very much because I don't know if I could do it every day. One of my comments is I think we need to do something even farther, reaching out from the, into the community as far as helping our schools. We as a city and as a school board can do. But I think, I think a lot of other people that can help, volunteers or something to do, programs to help out, and I'd love to help on that if I could. One of the other things that I'll, that I'll leave with is we're all concerned about building single-family homes. But I think one of the reasons why we have such a high poverty here in Stoughton is because people move here because rents are cheaper than Madison or other areas. So building single-family home, I don't think is going to facilitate the people that are living in poverty because they probably won't be able to buy a $200,000 house. So that's one of my concerns is that I think we're still gonna have the poverty issue. So, thanks.
Ms. Sork?
Interesting point with that. There does need to be a balance. There, when you look around at the services that are available, I know at the, at the planning meeting earlier this month, I had a number of people come to me and explain that the challenge for them with their families was finding really enough to do here and to be attractive and not go into Madison every time they wanted to go do something as a family. So it seems that there needs to be a building of, yes, we have homes, but we also need to have services that are conveniently located that are going to attract families and appeal to families. We also, the transportation issue is definitely a problem because we have no way really to get anywhere. If you have a kid, say, out at Sand Hill and there's a reading night going on that night, if you don't have a car, you're not gonna be able to get there. The cab stop running at, I think it's six o'clock, and there's not gonna be a way to get there. So I think coming up with a combination of plans where we are building housing at different affordability levels, figuring out a way to get families into a home because that really would make a difference. We have unoccupied buildings sitting kind of peppered all over the city. If there is a way to work something so that people are able to get a roof over their heads, it will decrease their stress and give them some opportunities. We also need to look at transportation, whether it is bikes, bike lanes, some way to get from Stoughton to other communities. And then have things for people to do. It's going to increase employment and also be, make us more attractive so that people want to move here.
Couple of things. Allison, I guess, can you clarify what services families are looking for that Stoughton does not currently have? That's my first question. So, you know, as we're looking at proposals, we can kind of evaluate those.
The folks that I talked to didn't give specifics. They just said that when they were looking to do something as a family, a lot of times, there wasn't an availability. If you want to go out on a Friday or Saturday night, you know, and there's not a movie that you really want to see, it's tough to go bowling if it's late night. And they said that there were hard, it was harder and harder to find things to do in the evenings. I know when we moved here, it was impossible really to find anything to do on Sunday. Everything was closed. Now the library's open, which is great. I know we've definitely made use of that. But the pool, the high school pool is open for a little bit of time. But if, I, you know, and I wish, I should have asked more questions about what it was that would be appealing to them. I know that they have, the people that I talked to had kids slightly younger than mine, which mine are nine and eleven, and also older that were middle, middle school and high school age. So that, I would, actually, I would go back to those people and see what might appeal to them. What do they go to Madison for? That's a good question.
I have a couple of other questions. I always like to, like, so, you know, with like the Nordic Ridge development and potentially the KPW development with the single-family homes, you know, there's no guarantee that there's gonna be, you know, kids in each of these homes. And with the trends of people waiting longer to have kids and having fewer kids, I mean, even though we might have three hundred new homes, each year we may only get three to five actually new students. So if that actually is a trend or what could actually happen, my question to the school board and the schools is how, with open enrollment, how do we create our schools to be more attractive, more sought-after? What can we offer that surrounding schools don't offer that we become more of a magnet that people want to open enroll and come to our schools as opposed to some other, you know, schools like in Cottage Grove or McFarland? How do we create our schools to stand above that we actually want to draw kids in? Because we can't necessarily depend on developing more. Because we can't necessarily depend on developing more, we can't continue just to develop just to fill our schools, but how do we make our schools that we have as attractive as possible? What can we offer? I mean, we have the Fab Lab, but how do we, in our grade schools, make them have things that other surrounding schools don't have that they become more attractive?
Dr. Onsager, I think there's really two parts to that. How many kids does, do housing starts to generate? I think it's probably one part of it, and then secondly, the attraction.
And, and I don't know the, the number off the top of my head anymore, and I apologize, but I remember 10 years ago, it used to be about a half a kid per doorway. When I got here, and this is the end of my seventh year, I believe applied population was saying .33 kids per doorway. So, you know, three doorways, three houses, you know, could potentially net one student. An apartment complex with three doorways could potentially net one student. But we know that single family homes usually have more students and so that kind of mitigates that average type of thing. I don't know what that number is off the top of my head. So, you know, your first point of Nordic Ridge, even if they build 20 houses, you know, you're not going to get potentially 20 students out of there. We did see an uptick in our enrollment at Sand Hill that I believe some of it is a direct reflection of the development at the end of Page Street. Sand Hill this year is 40 students higher than it was last year, and some of that is reflection of some of the development that happened at the end of Page Street. So, so that, that's the first part of that question. The second part, I think, to, to your question is how do we attract students? How do we make Stoughton the school district a choice and how do we attract and retain students just like we're looking at attracting retained staff? Programs like the Fab Lab are excellent examples. Programs like our Health Careers, where we have a CNA program where we have roughly 15 students on average a year that get their certified nursing assistant license while in high school and is a great resource to, to Skollin, to the hospital, to all the other different areas. Looking at, we've expanded some of our advanced placement classes. At the high school, we're studying the idea of academies. We're, and we're looking at what would that mean? So for example, let's take Health Careers because we have that furthest along, but we've already talked to the hospital about a potential partnership of, let's say, a Health Careers Academy of students who are interested in going into health career. Maybe their senior year, half of their day is spent on an internship, either paid or unpaid. And it could be Health Careers, it could be our science, our technology, our engineering, it could be business, it could be. So we're exploring those options. We're looking at, and the board will talk about, I believe it's in May, possibly talking about potential different ways to design grade span or grade configuration in our elementary schools. So we're looking at, could we have a STEM elementary school? Could we have an elementary school that is inquiry based? We've had some great innovation grants that came from our staff. So for example, the Kaganza kindergarten class is a prime example. They've re devised how they've done kindergarten this year, and it's more of an inquiry based, using play kind of as a conduit, because we know at the early age, how, how did we learn and play? We touch things hands on. They're doing some great things with, with their students on the inquiry and the, the love of learning and the natural inquisitiveness. So how do we expand upon that? How do we, ideally, we'd like to talk about, you know, could we expand the arts? Could we expand possibly global language in the elementary schools? Could we? So we're talking about just some of those things, you know? How do we meet the needs of our students? So how do we prepare students for their future? One of the things that some of the staff kind of have heard me say numerous times, we need to prepare the students for their future, not our past. And so, because we all remember what school was like and we all remember, well, that was okay for us, but our students are graduating to a different world. So how do we meet the needs of our students? And if we have those conversations and we start, and we do different programs to meet the needs of our students, I think that'll, will attract students. I think we also need to look at eventually seeing education as a regional resource and doing some collaboration with some of our neighboring schools. So for example, Oregon is seven miles down the road. Oregon has a state of the art automotive lab. We will not be able to afford or not, not be able to replicate that for a long time, but why should we? Could we do some agreement with Oregon schools that our kids could take advantage of their automotive lab while we have a state of the art Fab Lab? And could they take advantage? So those are conversations that I'm having with my colleagues across the region of could we do some of those things? So, so those are all just conversations we are having.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Engel.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bart was first, we'll get you next.
Right, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. First, looking at Erica's numbers, I couldn't help but notice that I think a lot of those cities were compared to ungrowth. McFarland, Oregon, DeForest, I think a lot of those really took off and started outpacing us when they got the four lane highways and more transportation to them. And I've been on the council, I think, about seven months now, and we have met with the DOT a number of times, I think like three or four since I've been here. We've asked to improve 51 and other transportation areas to come here, but they are very limited in what they can do for transportation and improving and getting as possibly a four lane. It's not on the table right now. I think they're going to reevaluate sometime around 2029, somewhere around there. So it's far out. So that's one hindrance we have to the growth. And I guess to Allison's comments, I also have a five-year-old and a young one, almost two here in May, and we are looking to improve the city and make it more of a destination. We're looking at a splash pad, improving maybe rec center, man park, a lot of things that will help nightlife, but as, I think organically as a city, if we can get growth, that'll come. So I just wanted to comment on those, so you know that we are working and we, we understand the issues you're bringing up on some of these items, but.
Mr. Engel.
Yeah, thank you. Just to follow up on Tim's, what you were talking about, Tim. All of the programs, I mean, that's great, but wouldn't all that take more funding to do?
It's, yes and no. We have to take a hard look at what programs we're offering, what we're teaching, and is it, to be honest, still relevant? Is it still, how do we leverage different things? We are going to be rolling out and, and the board's heard a little bit about it, and they'll hear more about it again next month, I believe it is. We will be rolling out an increase in our devices. So we will, I don't want to use the word one-to-one because that's kind of a cliche, but we're going to be able to put Chromebooks and devices into the hands of, start out with all of our sixth through 12th grade students type of things. And so how do you use technology and how do you use, use that resource to leverage that? So it's, you know, it's working smarter, it's allocating resources in a more, you know, different ways to meet the needs of our students and to meet the growing needs of our students. So sometimes, yeah, sometimes it will take maybe some additional resources, but sometimes it's just using the resources we have in a smarter way. But also I have to say, we are very fortunate that we are part of a very giving community. We are part of a community that is very invested in education and the different foundations. Our Fab Lab is a prime example. Our Fab Lab was fully funded by our business community, where it costs the district very little to implement the Fab Lab, and we are still getting donations from not only our local businesses, but businesses from other districts as well. And they look at, some of my colleagues look at me saying, how did you get that business in our backyard to donate to you when we can't get them to donate? And it's a conversation. So some of it is not using our own resources, but going after other resources and different grants from across the state.
You know, it seems to me that the, the funding formulas and the way schools are funded in this state is basically set up to fail. Because, you know, you gotta have, you gotta have more growth to, in order to do anything. My understanding is the funding mechanisms are unfair to different districts. I mean, why, why don't they make them fair, for one thing? And the other thing is, I think I understood that two-thirds of all school districts are losing enrollment. Does that mean the whole state is losing enrollment as a whole? I would think it's going down as a whole, isn't it?
Erica can speak to that one, she'll know the numbers.
And if that's the case, and, you know, that's how you fund schools, you're set up to fail because you're not going to get the revenues.
I will say that I do think the state of Wisconsin did decline in enrollment as a whole for a period of time. I, I was at a conference about a year ago where they were talking about, talking about that, and I think it has actually stabilized, but what they are seeing is that kids, the populations are moving out of the rural districts into urban areas. So I don't remember the exact percentage, but the percentage of total enrollment that's locate, a very high percent of, of the enrollment is located in a pretty small percentage of the district. So when you look at like Milwaukee, Madison, you know, our larger urban areas, that's where they're seeing higher growth. And there are certain areas throughout the state that are seeing in general growing populations. Dane County is one of them, Milwaukee area over by the Twin Cities. But even as the state has kind of stabilized, they're still seeing that rural, smaller districts are really struggling with enrollment declines.
Thank you. Just an observation, I, I think sometimes all of us can be a bit short sighted. I'll, I'll bring up one point, and that is a number of years ago, I don't know, maybe five, there was some, there was some talk about cutting the music program in Stoughton. I mean, you know, and, and cutting back on it for violin, for violins, for, for music. And so I had just talked to a family who really loved the, the program and, and loved the fact that there was great music, including magical singers, and I mean, that that was a draw for that particular family to the school. And I had a bit of a fit and actually went to the school board at that point when they were talking about cutting that particular program. Not that, not, you know, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to put, like Regina was talking about, what draws a family to a community? Well, one of the things that draws, draws family to this community is, is the, some of the art stuff, our magicals, our dancers, you know, those kind of things. So when you, when you talk about cutting certain things, you gotta be really careful because I think the, I think that the, those particular things can be a real draw for a community. And I think Stoughton has real draw, also in the, and if you look at Stoughton scholarships for kids going onto the school, I mean, we are way up there in terms of, of the fact that we give, you know, our community is just giving all kinds of money to kids who are going on to, to beyond. So there's some really positive parts of Stoughton that, but, but you have to not be short sighted. I really thought that cutting that music program was kind of short sighted, and that's why I had a fit about it. And I, and I think those kind of things, I, I think are just super important to the school.
Thanks. I just, I'm with Tim saying that you got a grant that now some of, some of the grades we might get like a tablet or anything to help with. I think that's great, but my question is with the, the number of students that struggle with respect to, you know, poverty levels and everything, if we expect our students to use the internet or this technology if in their homes they don't have the ability to connect to the internet? Is there a way, and I'm just throwing this out as a question to the city, because I think Madison worked with this, to have like a citywide internet? So it would be a way that the city could work with the school districts that everybody would have access to the internet so kids who don't have it at home are not lagging behind because that just creates a bigger gap? Because they don't have the ability to go to the library or some other house that has it?
I think that would be great. We also know, we did a survey of our parents last year, and Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, 93, 94 percent, 94% of our families indicated that they had internet access at home. We have also invested in hotspots. That our students will be able to check out of the, of the library. So that if, if I have a Chromebook and I do not have internet access and it's going off of our cellular service type of thing, I can check out a hotspot to take it home so that I will have internet connectivity, et cetera. You know, so, so yeah, those are things that we need to, to be, you know, cognizant of. But yeah, you know, a kind of a net over the, the, the city, the district, et cetera, that we know that every, every family would have some sort of, you know, access. That's why, you know, one of the, the great partnerships that we've had is with this library, where our, there are three computers, I believe, at the library that are on our network. So students can go to the library and log into their district accounts because they're on our network.
Youth center as well.
Yeah, youth center as well. So those are all things, yeah, I, I agree with you that, that I think we have to start thinking of, of how do we help our families across the, across the, the area, et cetera, and their needs? You know, one of the things that, you know, we've talked about, the district and the city and transportation and all of this, you know, one of the things that attracted me when I moved here and my family and attracted people that, that I talked to, that I think we as both entities need to work together to actually market this. We have such a prime location that you can be east side of Madison, west side of Madison, Janesville, all within 30 minutes. So if I'm a family and, you know, my job or my career may not be here, I have access, you know, within 30 minutes to be wherever I want. We have a small town feel with our city and our schools close to big city amenities. And so I think we have to work together of saying, you know, what's great about Stoughton and how can we improve? And are there things we need to add, but also work together of, of letting people know the great things that both the school district and the city are, are doing and all that we have to offer.
I wanted to, if I could, address Regina's question about that broadband access. And there have been several initiatives and bills at the state capitol to provide broadband access. Unfortunately, at this point, the state of Wisconsin is providing that funding to much more rural communities than Stoughton is right now. The library also has hotspots that you can check out to use if you need to do so. One of the biggest things and best things I think we have going for us is the youth center. And we have 19, 19 computers down there that are accessible on the school system. So those kids can go to the youth center, log into their school account and do their homework or, or whatever they would like to do right there from school.
Okay, so it's Fitzgibbons and then it's Reeves.
Thank you, Tim. I was just dying.
I'm watching, his hand goes up for, being random.
Dying to say the same thing when you asked the question. How do we attract students here? Marketing. We have excellent location. We have Whitewater, Madison, Janesville, right there. Now, I'm going back to your question, but I asked the city, how do we attract people here? And I think it's the same thing, marketing. When I was moving to Wisconsin, I moved in 2000, and I remember in, I think it was 1999, that magazine had one of the, the, the 10 cities, the 10 best cities to live in America. And, and Madison was one of them. I don't remember, I think it was number one, actually. And why? And then it started naming all this with Allison said, biking, lanes, parks. The schools were named in places to work that were close to home. The schools were named in places to work that were close to home. So I think I would have to start thinking that what are the things that people, young families specifically, want and come, to come here? So, I don't know, being a public school, I don't know how marketing works. But all the time in the mail I find for private schools, enroll your kids here, and they say everything that's good for them. So we have to do the same thing. And another thing that I wanted to basically ask, just throw the idea there. When Kelly was talking about all the resources that we can offer in, in the things that the kids living in poverty may use to get out of poverty was also experiences. We need more programs, enrichment programs, that can cover for all those kids that lack the, the parents at home or they don't, for whatever reason, when they go home, they don't have the same opportunities like going to sports, music, or whatever kind of extracurricular activities that other kids may have. And the MSCR, for example, I think is a, is a partnership between the school and, and the city in Madison. And they offer program for all the families, not only just families in poverty. But those are things that we can also start thinking to work together to offer to everyone.
If I could, our recreation department has, as you know, a great selection of programs. And a family has to simply come in and say, I'd like to receive or attend this program, either at a reduced rate or at no charge at all. We don't ask, we never have asked, it's not something that we would ever do, and they can do so. To your marketing question, if I could, real quick, Scott. Superintendent Onseiger and I have been working with the Chamber of Commerce for years to talk about ways to continue to market our community, because it is all the same community, you're exactly right. And when Planning Director Sheil and I meet with businesses who are looking at expanding or growing here in Stoughton, those are all the great things we talk about. The fact that if you come to Stoughton, we're a small community, your employees can be at work, go to a dental appointment, or go to see your doctor, and then get back to school and back to work within the same day. And those are big things for businesses.
I was just gonna mention to your point, Allison, if, I would encourage folks to come to the public forums, to, you know, be involved in a charrette that will be coming up, and always, always contact their city council person. Because we should and need to hear from the community about what, you know, what we could do better, what ideas they have as we're in that development stage and the downtown redevelopment. That's the kind of input that we wanna hear. Why are you going to Madison? We can't be Madison, but if, you know, if you can stay here and spend some of your money and, and not move because you're frustrated, then that's the sort of thing, you know, we'd really like to hear. So I would, you know, ask them to contact their alderperson with their ideas or, you know.
Yes, as an alder, I've heard a lot of times when we have discussions amongst ourselves that we're always concerned about when we look at development and how it's going to affect the school district. How we can maximize getting the most amount of students we can possibly get. So, we're well aware of the situation that you have. Personally, as an alder, I struggle on a couple of issues. And right now, we have two developments that are proposed that have high concentration, large building structures for, for housing, apartment buildings, or, or flats, or whatever you wanna call them, townhouses. And I guess my question is, is when I look at that, what is the right number? How should we be looking at this? Should we be percentage wise, looking at percentage of single family homes versus apartments? On the riverfront development, that's obviously just a concept that was thrown out there that you saw. But looking at that, that's four hundred and seventy-five units, none of them are single family. Problems with that, that's thirty-five point five people per acre. How does that affect children and their development, being that packed in? The other portion that I, problem I have with, and it kinda ties us all together is, when I look at development, I look at how does it affect the character of this community? This community is identified as having a small town flavor, small town feel, has all the amenities that everybody wants, for the most part. And the struggle that we're having is, we need to look at that factor versus people who want growth. You can't, it's, it's a balancing act. And so I struggle with that when I look at these proposed developments. And I guess I'd like to hear from school district, what, what percentages, what, what would, what's optimal? I know we need stratification of, of different types of housing, but it's finding that sweet spot. And that's what I, that's what I struggle with.
And I don't know if that's something that we can, you know, as from, from the administrative standpoint, answer, because that's not our expertise, that's not, you know, what we look at or the, the development and, and the planning of what is that right balance? You know, you know, we can tell you that the data tells us from across Dane County and the state that single family homes, on average, produce more students or have more students into a school system than apartment complexes, than, than other things. But what is that, that right balance? I wouldn't even, you know, I don't even wanna go into that, because that's not my area of something, you know, that, you know, I, I would even know, you know, what that balance or what that percentage should be.
We've lost families that contacted you because they didn't have homes that they, they were interested in buying here. They went to Oregon, they went to McFarland, and they went to Verona, because they were, they're, they're just, there was no inventory. And we know that, I mean, they, when the Nelson opened up the new, or global industry, there were four, four executives who had families that wanted to come, and they all went to Oregon because there wasn't any place for them to buy a home here that they were looking for. That was a, you know, probably eight kids that we could have had. I think that's something that we do have to consider. I was just talking with Mickey here that they were trying to find a house, they couldn't find the house in, in the right price range. It took a long time. I think people wanna come here, I think they just don't have a place to go to.
Other questions?
Well, I would say it's not necessarily just a decision between single family homes and apartments, it's what kind of apartments? I mean, is it gonna be just a square building and surrounded by concrete parking lot and that's it? Or is it gonna be an interesting mix where people wanna live? Is it gonna have green space? Is it gonna be accessible to things that people wanna do? Because plenty of people don't mind living in an apartment, they just, if they're gonna have kids, their kids have gotta have something to do. They're not gonna go play in the parking lot, they're not gonna wanna live there. So if you're gonna develop that way along the riverfront, build some parks into it, build some things for people with kids to do there, and they'll, some of them will live there. Single family housing, I think, is ultimately better, but I don't think it's a matter of don't build any apartments, because that's basically what that riverfront kinda lends itself to. I mean, it's so much acreage, and if you're gonna get a lot out of it, it's probably not single family housing right there. But I don't think apartments are bad, it's just how you do it.
Being a Realtor for fourteen years, I've never sold a townhouse or a condo to a family. Condos and townhouses are for young professionals and people that wanna move out of their house because they're tired of the upkeep. They wanna have kids, they wanna be able to let them run outside, but townhouses are not gonna lend you to bringing families into the area.
I just wanna reiterate that, that the map that Rodney put up with respect to the riverfront development is an overkill. It's really not what's, you know, the developer really envisions in there, and it is a community process. So, I think the RDA is actually looking for a lot of green space and, you know, a very open feel. So there'd be parks and community gardens and trails and so, but I do encourage you guys all, again, to come to those charrettes to help us design something that is enriching for students and that would be attractive to families.
I just, you know, and, and again, you know, this is, this is not my area of expertise, but has the city, and if we had a conversation about what, you know, kinda Allison's point type of thing, what young families are looking for? What attracts young families to, to a community? Is that something that, that, I don't know if the city's had those conversations, or, you know, is, that would be something, you know, we as a school district would also be interested in, from my lens, of, of having that conversation of, what is it that young families are looking for? What attracts young families moving here? And how, you know, are there things that we can be providing, whether it's a, you know, collaboration between the school and the, the city, et cetera, in order to meet those needs, in order to meet those wants, that makes us more desirable to young families?
I can speak to what Recreation Director Tomlich says. And he and Dan keep on top of the trends and on top of the, what they hear. Because they have young families coming in all the time to sign up for programs. I know they've talked about it at, at the Parks and Rec meeting. But Tom will state that there are certainly always going to be families who want to play the organized sports, basketball, baseball, soccer, certainly those that want to do that. But there are also what seems to be more families now that want to do what's called free play. They want to just get together and hike or bike, we talked about that a little bit. When he talks about that new recreational facility, that, the hub reported on it last week, I think, and we talked about it being a dream, but I think it's a very realistic dream. Folks could come down there and do all sorts of things, be it kayak on the river, or be it paddle boat, or, you know, whatever. Something to replay that families do together. Tom is looking at, currently looking at Kritel Park. Kritel Park is a great small park in our community, but it's, it's seen butter days, to be honest with you. So he's looking at transforming that park into something that, as he says so, so kindly and politely, kids our age, when we were kids, we would just go outside and play. So maybe it's some tree stumps that kids would hop from one place to the other, or they'd climb up a ladder. Or it's all natural types of play, and maybe put that in Kritel Park and see if that can kinda fill that need of free play that we used to have as kids, but we don't see that so much now. So, Tom and Dan do try to keep, keep an eye on that, but they're always open to what, what the school is hearing and what everyone is hearing to let them know. All right, great, great.
And I'm a Realtor, and we've been trained as Realtors that young families wanna move into the homes that are nice, nice homes to live in, in nice neighborhoods, that are safe and have good schools. Those, those are the, those are the basic things that we're taught as Realtors as to where, why people live, wanna live in towns, cities, and places. It's gotta be safety, good schools, and, and just, and a, and a nice place to raise a family. It's pretty basic stuff, but it, but it, and it's pretty simplistic, but, and I think Stoughton has all those things. I just, I agree with, we, we aren't marketing ourselves very well with all those sort of really great aspects. We're, we're a safe community, I think. I think we're a, I think we got nice houses, nice homes, I mean, look at the, look at our houses. Some of their old, old ones and new ones are beautiful. We don't have enough of them, I agree with Donna. And, and we have, and we have good schools, I mean, what can you say? It's an avenue of growth if you look at what Realtors are looking at.
Other questions? Nick?
Oh, I think one thing to consider regarding transportation is, transportation within the city that's not via car. And so, that lends itself to accessibility to all the amenities that our city has to offer, especially for families who may not have a reliable vehicle, they need to be able to access what we have. And so, sidewalks that are complete and are, and that are in good repair, and bike lanes that aren't painted on the side of the road, that are safe for children to ride on, that are off the road away from cars, are really important. And that also is important for kids getting to school, because it's two miles. I think that we don't bus kids if they live within two miles of the school. And two miles is a pretty long way to walk if there's not complete sidewalks, or if there's not a bike path. Because most, a lot of parents aren't gonna want their kids riding right next to a car. And so, that's something to consider, I think, when we're developing things, or when we're trying to increase access to the amenities that we have.
I think if you wanted to make one great generalization as far as how, how to utilize the schools, or what would kinda be ideal for the district would be, you know, it, it sorta goes with, with just about any set of buildings that you have. You'd ultimately wanna have about an eighty percent occupancy rate in the building with a two percent annual growth. That way, that would give you plenty of time to plan to expand.
Other questions?
Just on to Nikki's request for bike lanes. The, the Rivers and Trails Committee within the city and the Parks and Rec actually drew up new bike routes that actually connects almost every single neighborhood to their local school. Unfortunately, a lot of our roads throughout the city are too narrow to actually have painted roads. But they're looking at like reducing like speed limits, there'll be signs posted on these different bike routes. So we are looking and to address that. So, right now, with these new maps, that I think will be showcased soon, and at the Earth Day Expo this, this week, the parks are gonna put them there. It, it, we're, they're really looking at connecting all the schools to local neighborhoods with bike routes and being very visible. So, even though your child might be riding on the same street as a car, they'll be designated as bike routes, and to be careful and to look for bikes. And so, although it's not gonna be painted, there are gonna be demarcations to alert drivers and, and kids. So, that's what we're doing so far. And any new road, we're looking at putting it in the bike lanes.
Okay, well, it's ten o'clock, so unless somebody has something they really wanna get out, I'm going to have the last word since I've been sitting here quietly. To your point, Tim, you know, what, what, how, what can the city do to effect growth that's going to help the schools? I think there's something else we have to look at. Growth is not just an issue for the schools, it's, it's an issue for the whole community. By virtue of the fact that we have had practically zero population growth in the city of Stoughton over the last ten years, our population's getting older. The percentage of people over the age of fifty-five is much higher now than it was ten years ago. You know, one of the things that we pride ourselves on in this community is our beautiful downtown with its boutique businesses and everything. The fact of the matter is, the fewer people, or the more people you have who are living on a fixed income, the fewer people you have available to support those businesses. So, it's not just that we need more kids because that's good for the schools. Young families help keep a community vital. You know, unless we want to turn into a very large retirement community, we have to develop a plan that encourages young families to come in to replace those who are, in effect, aging out of the community. You know, you were asking, what's the right mix of housing? And I agree with Tim, we don't know the precise figures, but I do know that we have to, the city, I believe, has to support plans that encourage a wide range of housing. You know, if thirty percent or more of our kids are living in economic distress, that means that a pretty sizable percentage of the families in our community can't afford the single family homes that probably most of us sitting here live in. the single-family homes that probably most of us sitting here live in. We've got to provide good, decent housing that they can live in. We also, though, have to have housing on the other end of the spectrum. You know, the four, five, six hundred thousand dollar houses, sitting on half and one-acre lots. Because otherwise, those families are not going to move to Stoughton. They are not going to enroll their kids in Stoughton schools. They are not going to participate in the life of this community. And then, of course, we've got to have housing that's in between, which is probably where most of us will live. I know that when my family and I moved here eighteen years ago, which was, you know, kind of still in the boom part of the building phase, especially on the west side of town where we live, we looked at already-built houses. And, you know, we found a few that were decent, but we would have had to put a lot of money into getting them to look the way we wanted them to look. So, we built a house, just like a lot of other people do. The only way that you are going to be able to create a market for people like me, who came to Stoughton in part so they could build a house, and enjoy the amenities of Madison, like Tim's talking about, while I work in Janesville, is because there were lots to build on. And I understand that there's some folks who don't like to see, or don't like the idea of the city's geographic footprint spreading. But I'm telling you, if we don't accommodate some of that spread, we are not going to grow. And if we don't grow, our school district will shrink, our population will age, and the businesses that we're so proud of downtown are going to have a lot harder time surviving. So, that's my two cents at the end of the show. Thank you. And thank everybody for coming here. Thank you to the guys with the cameras, and setting up the wires, for making this happen, so that everybody could hear it.
Thank you.
And we'll try to do this again soon.
Sure. So, I'd also like to thank the camera crew, led by Derek Westby. I know they had a long day setting up. This is, there's a lot of equipment here for people that are watching on TV. You can't see half of it. I'd also like to thank the school board members, their administrators, city council members, and staff, and also those in the community that are watching this on, on WSTO, or that were here earlier. Having said all that, we do need a motion to adjourn for our committee of the whole. It's got to come through the city.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Thank you very much.